It is now 5:00 PM and we are still in our work session for the city of Iowa City. On January 5th, we just finished capital improvement projects. And we took a short break for 10 minutes and so we're going to continue our work session. I do see that all of our counselors are present. Mayor Protem is actually in transit from and will be joining us here momentarily. So other than that, I do see Ryan from USG. And I'm looking for Eleanor, our city attorney. Yes, she's there. All right, I think we are ready to go. So we will jump right back in on, and I even see Anna. I see Anna, so welcome to both of you from USG. I want to just get us back into the work session and we're going to continue our discussion on the preliminary plan to restructure the Iowa City Police Department towards community policing. And I think I'm just going to open the floor to counselors to kind of chime in wherever you want to on this item. And I guess personally I'll start, if that's okay. No one jumped in, so I'll jump right in there. At least for me, I am still weighing through all of the items as this is a huge document, as we all know. I am certainly starting engagement with people in the community on more specifics within the documents. So I am not in a place to give much comment at this time personally. I know that there hasn't been some input from some of the individuals that were a part of the process. And I'll name two of them. That is the South District Neighborhood Association, as well as Black Voices Project. They haven't had a meeting yet, yet this year since the document was released. And so I am kind of reserving for their, for them to weigh in as well personally. And so I don't have very much to add on this topic at this point. So that is where I am as of now.
Mayor, I would concur. I think, one, like you said, it's, it's a pretty weighty and detailed document with which we've been presented and I want to, you know, thank the city manager for that and all of his work and staff who've been involved with that. And this is a really important process and I think we want to be as expeditious but also as cautious as we can in terms of making sure we get the public input, that we have a chance to really read through it in depth. And I know in the last probably week and a half or two weeks, a lot of us have been sidetracked from that in terms of reading the budget because we have some pretty tight timelines with the budget. So I'm the same place you are, Mayor. I don't, I don't have a lot to add at this point tonight. I want to hear more from a broad range of the community. And I do want to make sure it really is the broader community, not just narrow segments that we, that we really need to hear from. So for any of the public that are listening, I do hope that you will give us some feedback, call and ask us questions. And I think it's important as we look at these recommendations, you know, as the city manager said, you know, look at the rationale behind those, not just at the recommendations themselves. And, and then personally, I think what we should entertain is a work session devoted just to this, maybe in a month or so. And I think we need structure for that work session. I think we really need to think about how we are going to do it with 36 recommendations or whatever. I don't think it's going to be a productive meeting to just open it up once we are ready to really talk about it. I need, I think we really need to think about a structure for that work session so it can be really effective and productive. So that's where I am at this point.
Well, Mayor and Susan, I think you kind of took the words out of my mouth. I, I agree. It's a lot to digest. It's a big document. And so I, I appreciate Jeff and the staff that took time to put it all together. But there is a lot of information in there and it's, and things that, that just can't happen overnight. Things that we really have to give a lot of thought to. And Susan, I appreciate your suggestion and I totally agree that we should have a work session that, that's totally devoted to this so that we can really take time to, to look at each item and, and look at the consequences and what it would mean to the community. But I agree.
The only thing is about work session is people cannot speak. Do you have an idea when can we hear the public speak and give us feedback? Or do you want to open that work session for people to speak? I just can, yeah, I agree with you, but we, we need time. But I would like to make sure how are we going to get the input from the public? And you know, because as you all agreed that this is a big topic, we need to hear more and we need to hear the view of a lot of people so we can make our mind.
Well, for me, I mean, I think there's a place on the website for input. People can always call us. People can always email us. I guess the question is typically in the 11 years I've been on council, I would say probably 99% of the time that is, is how we have gotten our public input is through individual conversations, emails. We've done community input events. We still, you know, we still could do something like that. But when it has come time for the council meetings, like the work session, that has been devoted to council dialogue and council discussion, trying to get all of that input ahead of that time. And then of course, once we come to that point of taking any formal action in a formal meeting, we've always opened that up for input. To me, that is, that's almost too late for people to really give us input that might have a strong influence on our decisions. So I, I would just encourage people through the website, through phone calls, through emails. And maybe we want, once we get through the budget, maybe we want to think about doing some more public engagement like we did during the input process. So I'm not sure what other people think in that regard.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm going to just say one last thing before, as a council can talk. I just want to say that, yes, I understand that the work session is devoted to council and everything. I, my goal is to make sure people understand it. This document now in English, a lot of people, they don't understand what is in this document and what it means, what the city can do to make sure everybody understands what's going on. And also feedback, like the way that we receive feedback is not working for a lot of community. And I think this is important topic. We need to give the opportunity to reach out to a lot of communities so we can have their input. That only thing I'm really, you know, we can devote the work session for the council to do only that's not, I don't mind that. But I just want to make sure we don't forget to, yes, to include everybody on this and try to think about a way, how can we include them? That's all.
I, I do wonder if we don't consider having an opportunity at our, either within the formal meeting or we set an aside, another opportunity for, and then when I say the formal meeting, maybe 30 minutes of community input on, on this item. Or we do some type of a listening session just for this via Zoom where we can get people input. So that's what I might think, you know, we might want to think about as we're continuing this discussion.
I, I agree that getting a wide variety of public input and I think elevating the members of our community who we expect may be impacted the most by restructuring the police department is really important to me. And that I especially, as Mayor Protem was saying, just, you know, reaching out to, to communities and parts of the community. I do think we need a little bit of a process around that. I think this is the type of subject matter that, you know, having the, the feedback form on the website is to me, maybe not enough, you know, to, to get the information out and to get feedback. So absolutely agree that, you know, encourage anyone who has input to contact us individually and, and to, you know, engage through those mechanisms. But I, I think we do need to do a little bit of organizing around it. I was wondering about if counselors are interested in working groups. So the experience that we had with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, where, you know, Janice and I were kind of a subcommittee on that topic and then met with a variety of, you know, interested people and kind of reported back. I don't know that the council has to, you know, lead that kind of thing. But to me, if we can divide up the 36 recommendations, maybe by subject areas, and even the plan itself has a few different ways, we can kind of cut that up. And then consider having, you know, even if we're just encouraging or facilitating, making sure that the people who we think may have input, who, you know, might need an invitation to, to that table to be able to provide that input. I don't know what people think about, about that.
I think that it, that it really does warrant extra and extraordinary efforts, much as we put it, not dissimilar to what we put into the TRC. And that it's also incumbent upon each of us as part of that to reach out to a wide variety of people that we know, not just expect people to come to us. It would be great if they all did, but I think we all know that that won't happen. So, and we, I, I believe we, each of us know a really broad cross-section of the community. So, and it, so I would support what, what Laura's suggesting. And it's sort of an informal subcommittees. And I also really urge every single member of council to essentially to make a list and start reaching out to, to people and, and whatever cross segment of the community you know the best or think you can, you can be effective with.
I guess I'm going to, it sounds like no one is going to provide comment, at least, you know, in a more general sense to the draft and in my mind to the, the process as it's unfolded up to this point. But I guess I felt a certain obligation, perhaps is the word, to at least express my feelings at the moment in terms of, you know, what, what I've gained from this and, and some comments related to the draft. So I, you know, prepared some thoughts on that that I'll share with you. Obviously, as, as I think all of us understand, there's a much, much needed further discussion within the community in terms of getting a response, both to the draft and, you know, their just general sense of, of how this question of policing should be addressed. But I did want to kind of give an update in terms of where I am at the moment based on what I've seen and experienced. And, and by way of a summary, I would say that the, the focus of my observations and comments is that in terms of this, the strategy that's laid out in the draft, avoiding calls for police services, which is referred to as prevention, whether that's initiated by community members or by police officers themselves. I think that is the critical approach in terms of trying to address what I understand to be some of the concerns related to our police efforts. Replacing those interactions with public health professionals. You know, there's a lot of talk about home, the homelessness issues, the mental health issues, interpersonal conflicts and things of that sort. All of them clearly seem to lend themselves to that, that notion of addressing those kinds of calls for service with the professionals that are properly trained and suited for those kinds of calls. And I certainly, I think that's, I'm in agreement, certainly, you know, that makes a lot of sense. One of the things that came out of the draft was that, that was different from what I was hearing at the meetings and also in my conversations with IFR was the, the, the model for that interaction. And, you know, there was a, certainly with IFR, an interest in the cahoots model. I had read some pieces on, on, on cahoots and how it was structured. And, you know, that it's being considered by many cities throughout the country at this point. That, you know, that, I was kind of expecting that that would be acknowledged and included in the report. And I didn't see any evidence of that. So that, that's something that as we move forward, I would certainly be, be concerned with and interested in, in following. As I mentioned months ago, I, I found the, the architecture that IFR had presented to be a useful one. I felt it did bridge between the kind of more generalized discussion that we see nationally on Black Lives Matter and conditions in Iowa City. And, and the five components of that plan were mental health, anti-homelessness, interpersonal conflict, road safety and drugs and alcohol. You know, the three first categories, you know, I just discussed. But I felt the, the question of road safety was, was an interesting one in, in the way that it intersected with Black Lives Matter. And so, so that's something that I'd like to comment on a little bit. You know, if you, if you look at our budget, it's very clear that road safety is a top priority of our field operations within the police department, which is the largest component of our police department. It has 78 full-time employees. And I've, I've said before, and I will say again, that I think there are several potential ways we can advance community wellness and public safety on our streets while reducing the need for police officers to enforce traffic laws through traffic stops, which will thus address the issue of driving while black. I do think many, many members of our community, you know, the interface they have with our police officers while driving is a very important part of their experience in town here. And so that, that, that was why I felt there should be some emphasis on that. As we learned at one of the listening posts, in addition, traffic stops can also be traumatic for persons with special needs. They're very sensitive to sirens and flashing lights. So I began to see that there, it wasn't simply the BIPOC community, but others as well who are impacted by the experience of the traffic stop. The draft plan noted that 25% of our calls for police service are traffic stops and collisions. In fiscal year 2019, there were 14,482 traffic stops. These, these traffic stops are mostly police initiated rather than responses to a public request. My belief is that the fewer times our police officers interact with people when enforcing traffic laws, the less likely those interactions will go badly and people will be able to more peacefully go about their lives. And months ago, I mentioned how I felt some of those things could be addressed. One of them being eliminating traffic stops for minor infractions. That is recommendation 21. I think perhaps more could be done along those lines. In fact, I found one, one of our pieces of correspondence from Donna Ruth Berry mentioned the idea of a seasonal car check event. I know I've talked with other counselors about this concept. I think that's one way of taking something out of that current condition where you're, you're talking about an armed police officer stopping a vehicle for a minor traffic infraction, whether it's defective equipment or what have you, and turning that event into a very positive experience where it's a more kind of community service and event. So that, that's one way I think we could, we could address it. The second, which did not make it into the draft plan, was implementing changes to our road conditions, which impel drivers to drive, to drive at the speeds that are posted as our speed limits. And I refer to those as self-regulating streets that do not require police-initiated traffic stops and thus will vastly improve traffic safety. Some examples of self-regulating streets, ways we can do that, we've already implemented. They would be road diets, traffic lane, narrowing traffic lanes and so forth. This, this in my view is really the ideal approach toward traffic safety is making sure that our roads are consistent with the speeds that we feel are safe within our community. And as I mentioned, these are already underway in Iowa City. So what I would say is, the emphasis I'd like to give it is that now that we understand how this issue intersects with Black Lives Matter, that we accelerate that effort. I would argue it should be accelerated for the, from the standpoint of transportation equity. But there are a number, a number of ways in which implementing these, these changes in our road conditions and accelerating that program will benefit the community. And then the, the third was the deployment of the automatic, automated traffic enforcement, such as speed and red light cameras. There's, what I would like to add to what I've said before is that considerable research supporting their record of reducing car crashes and traffic speeds exists now, as well as reducing the, the traffic stops. Just one of many examples that I ran across was Seattle's program, which saw a reduction of 23% in car crashes and a third of a drop in crashes involving pedestrians. So in brief, I would say that implementing these changes to our, our policing policies will be more successful than our current practices in achieving our ICPD's field operation goals of reducing traffic crashes and significantly improving police interactions with the public, especially people of color. And then lastly, on the question of drug and alcohol use. You know, we historically, substance abuse plays a significant role in policing in Iowa City. Along with road safety, those are the two goals that I see in our budget that are referenced as top priorities for the ICPD. My, one of, one of the things that I felt was interesting was we, the impact of COVID on access to drinking establishments did provide an opening for exploring possibilities for creating other venues for all of us to socialize more safely. And, and I would like to continue those conversations again with the emphasis being on the prevention of alcohol and drug use, abuse, rather than its criminalization at the back end. So, so those are the, the, again, I'm, my observations up to this point, we've been working on this for months. You know, I, I'm certainly interested in, in hearing how people feel about, we can restructure the police department. But I did want to report back to those who are following this as to what my, my feelings are with, in, in terms of the draft as it stands now and also the way I would envision moving forward.
I think, Don, you make some very good points. And one in particular, and I think a lot of the points we need to, if we continue to, to look at this and try to modify it and, and make it a workable document. The one item that really always stands out for me that you talked about are those traffic enforcement cameras. And I think we need to give that some serious thought. As we've said, they're, they're colorblind. They just note the license plate. And I think that's moving on our way to the anti-racist aspect of, of the policing and, and the traffic, policing, traffic enforcement. And I think it's an excellent thing. And along with that then, the idea of having some sort of a safety clinic then to follow up on that, to bring these folks in. We already participate with several mechanics in the area with the bulbs program. So they would, I would think, be more than happy to also be a part of this clinic and, and help folks get their, their bulbs replaced or whatever needs done. I think a precedent has been set with the fire department, does this with the child safety seat. So they, they already do this. So I think it would be only natural for the police to, to pick up something like this. So I, I'm in agreement with that and think we should really give that some thought to include that.
I really want to add again, I had received a lot of feedback from some people, but 99% of those feedback was from white people in this community. You know, I, I, while I understand their feedback is very important to me and I appreciate it, they reach out, even though they have a very, very nice feedback, I'm going to acknowledge that. But I really want to hear, I always believe that when, when we get the solution for the people, from the people who affected by the issue, it will be really amazing and great solution because it comes from the people. That's what, being affected, they say, hey, that's what we want to see. That will make us feel comfortable. We make us feel like we are part of this community. That's how you solve it and we're blessed for it. That's why I want to add to what Laura said, we really need a project. We need a campaign for this. We need a plan. And what I really going to suggest right now here is the city can have some budget of translation. Believe me, that's a very important part. If we can create some money or allocate some money, I mean, to translate the document to at least three languages because the big population in this community right now is Spanish, French and, you know, Arabic. Where we provide this document to the associations, Black Voices Projects, Sudanese Association, Immigrant Voices Project, CWJ and Latinos and everyone ask them in their meeting to discuss this with their members because they have monthly meeting. So they can discuss this document in their language and, and tell us feedback and email it to the city manager. So we have, like, we don't have to go to individual and we make the community involve. I'm real, I'm willing to reach out to those people if that document has been translated because I know translation is a big deal. Please give this a full consideration and, and give it some money so we can contact everyone and make them involve.
All right. So it sounds like there is some consensus for there being some type of a structured meeting or input from the community. And so I heard works, work groups, I've heard if we get things in different languages, those communities can respond, I, I think independently to the, to the, to the council. There's also listening session out there. So I guess with, with me pointing out those kind of three ways to get input from the community, I haven't heard a consensus on which, I, I still, at, at least for me, I think getting it, getting it in different languages, I think would be important. And, and I'm seeing some not enough heads here. The majority of not enough heads. So wanted to maybe direct the city manager to get it in different languages. And we're sounding like the three, are we okay with the three? And I'm, yeah, I see. Yes, I'm seeing a majority for the three languages. All right, so we'll go ahead and do that. And then as far as setting up opportunities for people to weigh in as the community, do we want it, do we want working groups? Do we want listening session where people can just come and share their thoughts on this item?
Mayor, ma'am, make a suggestion. This is just a broad suggestion, but as you all have seen, you've had this document for a couple of weeks and it's not the easiest to wade through. And even if it's in different languages, I think people are going to, are going to struggle to find the time to, to get through it all. I, I really encourage you to think about breaking it out into groups. However you want to group them, it doesn't have to be the same types of groups that I use to, to format the document. But much like you did with the listening post where you had a focus on, on each session, you can still take comments on the entire plan. But I'm, I fear, I, what I fear is that if you just put a call out and you do a listening post to tell me about the plan, you're going to get very high level comments. I don't like it. I don't like it. I like it. That sort of thing.
That sort of thing. And I'm not sure that's gonna be helpful for your deliberations. Maybe it will on some level, but if you can really break down to however many core issues you feel need to be addressed by this type of plan. I think the quality of feedback that you'll get, the insight that you'll get from community members will be much more valuable.
Yeah, I agree with you, but the listening post, you guys attend listening, but how many immigrant were there? Be honest. You know, to be honest with you, that's, that's not the type of outreach for immigrants. You know, I, you're gonna see white people coming to the, you know, listening booth more than even black people. You know, I, I really, when I say like this, because I want, like, even if I'm immigrant and came to the and see all those people, I will be afraid to speak up. Maybe because if I speak up, maybe my language is not okay and I'm, I'm scared that they don't understand me. But in like a community session, in your own language, people will speak up more. That what I have been discovered from my working with the community, I swear God. But as in, of course, is, is majority, but it is my really obligation that to tell you what my experience is and how those things work. And it is
I, I mean, I agree with you, Maz. And I would be happy to help lead a session in French, for example. With, but, and I also think that along with what Laura said initially, that, that perhaps we could have a couple of counselors agree to sort of go through the document and do the breakout so that we can figure out which, which of these, which of these recommendations belong sort of in which group that we'd be, we'd be dealing with. I mean, I know some folks, for example, in the French speaking community I could reach out to and, and try and set something up, but that's sort of, that's my niche. Every people, other people have their, their niches as well.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I know early on when we did a, did a listening post like out at Pheasant Ridge. I mean, we had a lot of members, I think, to the Sudanese community. People were very comfortable. They spoke up. Rockne Cole and I happened to do that one. So I totally support and hear what you're saying. I guess the question is with the pandemic still going on, you know, how, how do we wanna do? How do we wanna handle that? I'm limited to English. You know, I wish, I wish I wasn't, but I am. So no, I think trying to reach out and, and either do some smaller groups in person with people like that, you know, because of the pandemic. I'm totally open to that. I think we really need to try to do that. I wanna go back just real quickly to the translation. I don't, I really question, and at all the cost, I really question translating the entire document. I think, I mean, I think we start with translating the thirty-six or whatever recommendations. And if maybe there's a paragraph or two that kinda gives some rationale, maybe we do that. I don't think we're gonna get many people who are fluent in English reading this whole thing. So would, would you be comfortable, Maz, if we looked at like doing the actual recommendations and maybe a short paragraph or two for each one? Do, do you think that's reasonable?
Yes, it is. I, I was trying to say that too. I agree with you. If we can, also there is some item that is very important to them. And maybe those like only selected item to be translated and the recommendation as you said. Yeah, I agree with that totally.
I would agree as well. And I, I would suggest, and I, I think the meetings kind of in, in the place where the, 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 the people we are trying to make contact with actually live would be helpful. I think, you know, having, granted, it's COVID, I, you know, I'm not sure how the South District, for example, meets, but if, if we could attend virtually, if necessary, one of those meetings and discuss this. And I would, I would suggest that it be a much more open-ended conversation than focusing only or primarily on the plan. Partly be, you know, because I think it, it, it's, it's a document that I, I'm not sure it speaks the language of everyday experience, basically. You know, I, it certainly can be, I, I don't mean to suggest that it shouldn't be discussed, but I think it, it would be useful to go beyond that and to try to understand when, when at these meetings how people struggle or benefit from our current policing policies. And, and try to leave it a little bit more wide open as to how we can improve them. More again in the, in the calls for service. I really felt that's the interface right there. How do people actually interface with our police force? That's where I think, you know, that is the crux of the issue. How do we, how do we improve that? And as I said in my, my comments, where possible, reducing those contacts with better outcomes is, is what I would also suggest.
I do wanna do one clarification with Mayor Pro Tim, because I think I understood that she mentioned that she wasn't suggesting, at least for the, the different communities, that there actually be listening posts or any council presence is really documents that will be within their language and for them amongst themselves would have conversation and they would reach out to council. Like, we can certainly make initial contact is maybe what I understood to ensure that they have the document within their language. And maybe have a point of contact just to let them know the council is willing. But I, I wanted to make sure that I understood Mayor Pro Tim correctly and what she was suggesting, suggesting.
What I, yes, Meyer, what, what I was suggesting is, yeah, translate whatever we want to do that, like maybe a selected, you know, items to the, to three language and give it to the association. And like some like difference organization as well, like Black Voices Project for the black community. So, and we will, they will meet and they will discuss it among, among themselves in their language. And after that, if they would like to meet with two council, like a listen business and they have question, maybe they will call you and ask you for qualifications, not like call, ask you, invite you to come. Maybe it's, for example, invite Bolin Taylor and, and Dennis to come to a meeting with Congress community. And for example, they say, okay, we have question. After we discuss this, we had this question. And after you do this, questions, answer the question, they will give you their recommendation if they have anything, if they wanna add something, if they don't like something. So this is will be their recommendation. But if they feel comfortable and they have their own conditions, they don't have to meet, they can just send it to a contact person, a city manager or the city council. Yes, after the group met, they can do that themselves. But if they need us to come, so they can ask us question. I think they can just send us some, you know, email and ask us to, to be present. You know, after they discuss it by themselves, but give them the chance to do it amongst themselves without any pressure from council.
So what I might suggest is when we did the listening sessions related to Black Lives Matter. Kelly, our city clerk, reached out to various communities. Now, potentially there was some communities not on the list. So what I might suggest at least for, if we were to go with what Mayor Pro Tim is suggesting, is that if there's any more communities that we wanna reach out to, that we give that, that, those list of contacts to our city clerk. And maybe she can dispel the information. If, if, if the, if the, if we're really looking for public input or a space for public input. Of course, we heard the work set, working groups as well as the listening sessions. Would people be in agreement to maybe start with the listening session? And see where we go from there? Instead of maybe breaking it out in groups at this point? I, I know that our, you know, Jeff Fruin, our city manager, may mention of working groups to get a little more information. We are getting some information, I think, through emails and as people begin to digest this information and read it, associations will weigh in, I'm assuming. Just like they have in the past. With some, it varies what we get, right? Some are detailed in writing, some are verbally detailed and some. So I don't know. I, I think if we can kinda come to a, maybe a step one, it sounds like everybody's in agreement that we'll do the translations of the thirty-six points. And that'd be disseminated. I think our city clerk can certainly help us with that. So if we can focus now on what will be the next way to get the public engagement, would that be through creating work groups or would that be through a listening session?
What do you mean by creating? What the difference? Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll let you answer what's the difference between a listening session and a work.
Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to kind of make my pitch for what I meant when I said working group because I think what we have is thirty-six recommendations. I do not anticipate and please, you know, but I, we talk about it now if I'm wrong, but I do not anticipate that this is like a up or down vote on the plan, right? We have thirty-six recommendations that are pointing us in a direction, you know, or multiple directions on how we can implement change based on these different sort of areas or themes. And so what, what I was suggesting was trying to dig into that, right? I mean, I, I do agree that we need like overall input. But I think what we're doing and the appendices to the plan itself really illustrated this for me. What we're doing is something new. What we're doing is, is not, I, I would challenge any of us to find communities in the US that are really undertaking a, a more comprehensive overview to try and, and accomplish something like this. And so I wanna get more concrete. I really fear we're gonna take up a lot of time and, and maybe even lead people astray if we leave it open-ended because we need to get to the actual implementation of the changes that we've committed to this community that, that we would make. And so what I was talking about is maybe having sort of smaller group meetings that would be based on the topic areas. So for example, John, you brought up the, the Kahoots model. It is mentioned in, in the appendices relating to San Francisco because they have a similar type thing. There's information about it in the Eugene Oregon description and all of the diversion that we're talking about, right? So Kahoots is a model where there's not co-responder and we are absolutely talking about that. So we have recommendation for increasing funding for community for mobile crisis. We have a recommendation about making sure we can implement nine-one-one integration. Those are concrete things that are not labeled with the word Kahoots, but are taking the model of mobile crisis that is our community's service that we know we have strong nonprofit support for and making that into something bigger that can actually respond more comprehensively and divert those calls away from, from law enforcement. So maybe we have a group of people who are talking about the mental health response issues and can, you know, use the data that we have. Absolutely agree, John, calls for service, right? That, that's, that is the place where people are interfacing with our law enforcement. So being able to break that down, whether it's by calls for service topics and saying, okay, what, what, what does prevention look like in these types of incidences, right? What can, what can that be? In any, any case, I'm kind of rambling now, but that was kind of what I was envisioning is like topical working groups where we have people in the community who are invested in that already, who we know are gonna be partners moving forward. And one hundred percent, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for saying we need to elevate those people who are most impacted. And how we got to this point is by needing to make change to be anti-racist and to improve the lives of people of color when it comes to interactions with law enforcement. And so that has to be, that has to be top of mind, that has to be front of mind. And I think we've already gotten some input about that as well, that, you know, we, we really need to be making sure we're not losing the race part of this as we're talking about it. So that's kind of what I meant about working groups. I would be happy to participate in any of that or, you know, facilitate to the extent possible. I believe that I'm gonna be reaching out and having conversations anyway. And, you know, would kind of like, I guess, the blessing of my colleagues if, if, if you all think I'm not crazy.
To only agree, agree, agree that this is a, a, an important piece of the way forward.
I, I would
Agree with you.
I would also mention the truth and reconciliar commissions, the truth and reconciliation commission. Human rights commission. I think those seem like potentially good venues. Where, you know, the public could comment, you know, both the commission members themselves and the public could provide community comment at, at those meetings. So it seems to me that's a possible way in which we can outreach as well.
I know Counselor Taylor, where you wanted to chime in as well?
Oh, I just wanted to make a quick comment about working groups as such. I think what I saw with the listening post we had, which we had some wonderful comments from these folks, but it was kind of the same people who came to each one of them, each and every one of them. And I think that would happen with these working groups too. And I thank them for their input. They gave some very good input, but they would probably repeat the same things at these meetings. I just would have concern about that and I would have concern about counselors that weren't at a particular work session, not seeing the whole picture and not getting, getting input, everybody's input.
Okay, alright. I, it did sound like the majority of people felt that the document is we need to take our time to work through the document. Seem like work session, work groups are important. I wonder if we did. I think just for the sake of today, our people, I, I wanna make a recommendation that we actually ask maybe Council Burgess and Mayor Pro Tim and City Manager Jeff Fruin to work on this. Maybe talk about what those work groups look like, break them out and then come back on the nineteenth at our next work session and kind of give us some thoughts to move forward. What were people, what are people thoughts there? I'm seeing some shaking of heads.
I think that's good because I think, I think we've had a lot of conversation here. But we're not walking away from this with any definitive plan or structure. So to have a couple of council members work with the city manager and maybe get us some more specific structure of whether we're gonna try and do some Zoom listening posts, whether we're gonna try and do working groups, whether they're gonna try and do a combination of those things. I think that's a good idea, Mayor, because I was, as we were getting ready to leave this topic, I'm like, I'm not sure any of us really know what direction we're headed. And so I think that's a good way to do it.
And, and, and if I might even include Counselor Weiner because of all of her work as well as with different groups, the French speaking. Would Counselor Weiner, would you be amendable?
Sure, yes.
Great. Alright. We will revisit this on the nineteenth. Moving on to the next agenda item. So this is a discussion of Melania's council meeting and communication items that I, that I and Mayor Pro Tim had been in conversation about as well as some, some of the staff a little bit before having this item brought here. And there's three items. And so we'll kind of just go through each item and one is move in meeting start times one hour earlier. So what this would mean is that our work session would begin at four PM instead of five PM. And then our formal meetings that now start at seven PM will start at six PM. So, you know, I, I, I wanna open it up and, but I also wanted to at least maybe mention to the public, you know, what this could mean for everyone. Right now, where our meetings are on Zoom. And so this is really the focusing on when we're back in regular session, seeing people face to face. Although, we don't have to wait until that happens because we really don't know when that's gonna happen. But wanted to just bring this up and also allow opportunity for people in the community to weigh in. If, you know, on this one hour change. And so I'll leave it at that for introduction as to what this is. And then our counselors, please weigh in. And one thing that I might note is that as we have this conversation, we, I, I think the intention is for the public to have opportunity to respond to some of the things that we're proposing.
I personally, it doesn't impact me either way. My, my schedule is flexible enough. That moving it to an hour earlier is fine with me. I guess what I'm most interested in. And I know it's hard sometimes to get that public input is how members of the public perceive this and whether they see it as. Better, um, if they're coming down to the meetings, once we get back in person, they can get home earlier. Hopefully it means we get done earlier. We don't just extend the hours, extend the meetings an additional hour. So I'm, I'm, I don't want to make a change that negatively impacts people who really want to attend meetings. Um, I think as an aside, I think it would be better for staff. You know, they're getting done work quote at five o'clock and, you know, then having to do potentially our work session and then come back and do. A formal agenda and depending where their item is on the agenda, they're not getting out of here till later. So it would, I think it would be advantageous for staff. But I do think we need to try to get some input from the public.
Yes, I agree too, but I agree also for like not extending our meeting one hour. I remember the latest meeting that we have was midnight and I, I just like, you know. Maybe we can just have a limited at eleven instead of midnight, uh, you know, because we are extending it one hour and don't want to go like. You know, twelve midnight and we have it one hour more. So this plus, I really just find out that when we had this meeting online. A lot of people had the chance to lay in. We need to think about maybe we can have some time off online, like online. I don't know, interaction or what you call it, uh, if we went back to in person. If there is a way that still we can have a script for Zoom, people can just zoom in and, and talk to us. I don't know, but I just find out a lot of people attending city council meeting. People that I never saw, um, attending city council meeting, but they did while, uh, we're doing this virtual. Now, if we can also do something like that, uh, will be great.
Yeah, it seems to me there really are these two issues. One is the timing of the event and then also what's. Is it, is it an in-person event or is it a hybrid event? You know, it does seem the, there are advantages as much as I would like to get back. To in-person meetings, there are advantages to having it virtual, uh, to the community. So ideally, it seems to me, and once we do go back to in-person events that. If, yeah, as Maz was saying, if there's a way in which. That there's still the opportunity for people who for many reasons cannot make it to City Hall. Uh, or do not feel like sitting there for four hours waiting for their item to come up. Would have a way of, of more conveniently participating. At council meeting short of actually going to City Hall for that event. So. As I'm, I'm with Susan, I, my time is very flexible. It doesn't really matter to me. I think maybe if they started sooner, perhaps we could figure out a way to have breaks. I, I, I do feel we. Kind of burden ourselves because we don't. You know, we meet, our meeting, our formal meeting might be three hours and we don't have a break. And I, I don't know how you feel, but. You know, I'm kind of running on empty at that point. So, um. You know, I think the two things of, and I'm, in terms of the timing, I think it's really what is the community benefit from? And then. The, um, whether we can try to maintain a virtual presence. Once we're back in City Hall is the other issue.
Yeah, I think we do, we need to hear from people. My only concern with starting what the, the one meeting earlier is. What it, how anybody who wants to listen in is that, um, impacted by their work schedule. And you might get some people we wouldn't otherwise get. So it may be a wash. I don't know, but, but I think we should find out.
So it, so it does sound like on this item. Now, if anyone else want to weigh in, please do. But it does sound like on this item, uh, starting one hour early, we're open to it. We're just wanting some public input. I did hear Mayor Pro Tim mention, uh, maybe a hard. Fast stop time, uh, proposal. Um, I think I heard eleven P M. Because the latest, actually, I think the latest we went was about, was it one thirty?
Well, I think, you know, that gets managed with the agenda and I think staff is very good with managing the agenda, but I think we do have to recognize. There are certain occasions when things come up. That we end up just from a timing standpoint, uh, we end up with a jammed agenda. You know, maybe we end up with a bunch of rezonings or something or. Some other major things. So I don't think we have to set a hard and fast. I think staff knows what. Our limit is and their limit is on a reasonable, uh, meeting, a reasonable agenda. Um, but I think we all have to acknowledge those occasions. It's, it's going to go long. That's just the way this is.
And what, what, what could happen is any one of us, if we're noticing the time. You know, going along, uh, pretty late, what we might suggest is having a discussion on anything that we can potentially. Push back to the next meeting if it's not time sensitive or. Maybe having a special session and just for a few items that we decide we don't want to continue. So I think. We don't have to make that decision tonight. It's just in the back of our head. If meetings are going long, we have that option as counsel. So the other thing would be the virtual option, um, so the hybrid model that, uh, Council Thomas talked about in the virtual. That Mayor Pro Tim talked about, I think that will be something that, um, we can probably ask staff to look into. To see what, what that looked like if we were in person and also had a virtual option. So, all right, that's item, that's one, one of the things. So we want the public to definitely give their thoughts on that. The other is public comment and signing in procedures. So right now we use Zoom and it's, it works really slick. People raise their hand and I could see it on the side. As the, uh, individual that is calling people, um, upfront to, and giving them, uh, their time to speak here publicly to. To us. And so when we're back in session, it doesn't always go so smoothly. Because people have to sign in. And if it's individuals that have never been to a council meeting, it can be a little bit intimidating. When you come up and then, you know, whether I mentioned to sign in at the beginning and, and that process. It can be a little cumbersome. And so wondering if we might consider having a sign up. Outside in the lobby, uh, where people sign their name and then that's handed to me and, um. Maybe they'll have which item they want to speak on that's handed to, um, the mayor. And then the name would be called. And they will be able to present. The other thing could be a timer. So that could be. Up on the, up on the screens here in City Hall or sometime or somewhere. Where people understand that they are within their five minute, three minute, four minute, whatever has been asked, depending on how many. People, uh, have signed up for an item. So wanted to get people to weigh in on that.
I really like the model that the school district used in their board meeting. Well, I like it go like to red when it come to your time going to be ended and it is on the screen. You see it in front of you. So people like, don't need to remind them and. When it is a time finished, finished. So I, I don't know if, of course, it is up to the staff to, you know. To see if that's something that we can implement or not, but, uh, that's what the, the model that I really like.
And, and Mayor pretend they also, their model is that they, you have to sign up ahead of time. You fill out your name and. And that you're willing to speak and it gets passed up to the, to the front desk. So, yeah, I, I like that model also and the timer. They, they keep the timing. Which is good. I like that.
I like the idea of the timing just because we do have some people who go long-winded and I think in all fairness to everybody. To really kind of enforce that. I'm not as much of a fan, um, of people having to sign up ahead of time. I think people. Sometimes don't come and don't plan to speak, but then they, they hear something that really. Hits them in a certain way and they feel compelled to want to speak. I haven't, I don't know, I've done this for eleven years. I just, I haven't seen the sign in procedure be that cumbersome and that. Wasteful of time. You know, occasionally you get somebody who hasn't signed in and, and they take a few minutes to get their name down and everything. So that's not as compelling to me. We don't, it's not that often that we go to our eight o'clock cutoff. For comment, which is on our agenda. You know, if, if people are still commenting eight o'clock, we cut it off and then would come back to it the meeting. We very seldom have to cut people off and say, oh, we can't take any more public comment. So I'm not so worried about people. Having to sign in ahead of time. One of the things that we're not getting during the Zoom, which. And we sometimes weren't getting this in the regular meetings that I wish we would get back to enforcing. And that is people indicating their address. Right or wrong, uh, we're elected by residents of Iowa City. And quite frankly, I am going to give more weight to input from residents of Iowa City. Than people who do not live in Iowa City. I, I'm fine listening to their opinion and, and if particularly if they have expertise on an issue, they want to share with us. But when people don't live here. I'm going to listen to them as an expert and not as somebody who just wants to complain about our city. So I'd, I'd like to know where people live when they come in.
I, um, I, I, I would also like to know. If people are residents of the city, everybody's welcome to speak, but whether it's on Zoom or in person. These are, these are our constituents. Every, every resident of this city are, are constituents and. And I want to know if someone's actually, uh, part of, essentially part of our responsibility.
May I guess correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is, yes, you sign up ahead of time. But while the public comment in session. You still, if you decide, yeah, if you move by the public and you decide to do, you can go and sign in and hand, I like. Hand the paper because that's what I've been seeing at the school district. Why are people, or even if they came, they still can go and give the secretary. You know, a, a piece of paper with your name and address.
I, again, I think it is up to us how we, you know, institute that. We currently have, uh, when we were in session, people sign up. At the back, you know, they go and get their sign up little thing and they, you know, put the sticker down. So it's, it's kind of the same process, but. I think to, uh, Counselor Mem's concern, we can certainly. You know, do that last call for anybody out there that didn't sign up, giving them an opportunity because again, there are people that. Like she mentioned, you know, they're moved by a topic and we, we've seen people that sit there. And they say, I just have to get up, you know, and say something. And so I think we can still allow that. As a part of the process, um, the name and the, and the address writing, we, in person, we have that sign up. And I think, um, if people are wanting that to be a part of. The initial response when someone speaks via Zoom, I can, I can certainly institute. You know, introducing the person to come and speak and asking them to state their address. We could even have them write it in the comment section, but. Again, I, this is just an opportunity for people to weigh in. I do see our city attorney. Uh, so hello Eleanor.
Hello, hello. Um, I, I'm not, it's not clear to me whether we're talking about signup just for. Public comment of items not on the agenda. Or if we're talking about every agenda item because you ask for public, you know. Public comment on every agenda item. And that seems very cumbersome to me. I, I haven't. I haven't seen a school board meeting in a long time, but I don't believe they allow public comment on every item like we do. So. I also think with respect to public hearings, uh, I'm, I'm not wild about the. The sign up ahead of time. I think that's a time for people to speak when they want. And if it's spontaneous, it needs to be. Spontaneous. If it's in response to somebody who just spoke and they want to correct an error, then I think they should be able to do that. I also think we need to be careful about the time limit for applicants. We have, you know, unlike the school board, we have people who are coming to us with the zoning application or this application or that application. And they shouldn't be limited to the five minutes, just like staff isn't limited to the five minutes in making their presentation. The applicant shouldn't be either. So I don't have, have any problem with the signup for. Um, items not on the agenda, but to do it for every agenda item seems cumbersome.
Really meant the public comment, Eleanor, only during the public comment. Of course, the public hearing, that's something different. Everybody have to lay in. Sometime, uh, you know, yeah, the applicant have, they need more time. We ask them question and yeah. I totally agree with you. I just meant during the public comment only for item that is not on that.
Sounds good.
I wonder if, um, something different could happen. You know how you go to churches and then in the back of the seat, there's this little, you know, card that you pull out if you want to. You know, have, sign your name. I, I wonder if we don't have either someone at the beginning of our meetings or throughout the meetings. They just walk around with cards and, and give it to people that want to sign up. That way they can be at their seat. When their name is called, because I think that's a part of it. When, when people are coming up, there's just a little delay. When, when people are coming up. And so maybe there could be some explanation. About, you know, if you want to speak, there's, we will ask that you sign up and here's a sticker, do yada, yada, yada. So maybe we can have some more thoughts around that, that we were asking the public to weigh in on these items. And we'll, we'll put this back on the agenda. Is that all right? All right. Um, and then the last thing is the council emails and correspondence. So there's been an increase of, um, correspondence, um, at least in twenty twenty. And so I think, uh, there's, uh, I think there's a little, uh, growing frustration because all of the items. That are addressed to the council appears in our information packet. And, um, sometimes I think. There could be some response. To, to some of these emails that come in the correspondence. I'm going to ask maybe Jeff or, um. Or Eleanor to kind of have some, uh, maybe guide us through this conversation a little bit.
So this item, staff started thinking about this because of kind of the. The nature of the, the, the correspondence to council. I'm not talking to about correspondence to individual council members, but. Emails to the council at iowacity.org email address. And for years and years, you know how those have been handled. They, they are not, you don't get them in real time. You, um, they're put in your, in your next agenda packet. And I think, I think some of the reason for that has been that. Couple reasons, it's, it's handy sometimes to get a staff response to those before, before you see them because staff has some information. And, and then I think there's been some concern about replying all and, and having a meetings violation, but. It, it seems, it seems that. It, it doesn't, it's, it's odd for staff to get those emails and you not get them then when, when they're directed to you, particularly when they're of a nature that staff is not really. Doesn't really need to chime in. This is just something that, that they want you to hear. So I think there's two issues with emails to council. The first is when you get it. And the second is. Whether all council correspondence or goes on your, uh, your council agenda. And it's, it's not the info packet. It goes in the correspondence under, on the formal agendas. Kelly did, and Kelly, you can help me out here if I, if I mess this up, but Kelly did a, a survey. Of other cities and essentially what she found was that. Most cities don't have a group email. They just have individual emails. And of the two, that were eight cities of the two that do have. A group email, uh, one of, one of, it receives it in real time and one it goes through. By the city manager first. With respect to whether correspondence to the council goes on the council agenda. It was pretty overwhelming that that just is not a typical thing when it's not related to an agenda item. Rather just a list of correspondence that the council. Gets. I, I think only one of the eight city puts an agenda item on the agenda. If it's not, if it's not an agenda item, and then only if it's requested to be put there. So those are kind of the kind of the issues. I I think the, as I said, that the reason it's been done this way in the past is in order to get some staff response or information that you might want to have before you respond. The open records concerns. I don't really know why the council correspond. This was started long before I was here, why all council correspondence goes on the agenda. I think it certainly creates challenges for time and focus. I think it also sometimes you're having a discussion about something that you really don't have a full picture of. On the other hand, I think it's something that the community has gotten used to. So that's probably the flip side of that. It's kind of a community expectation at this point. A couple, Kelly and Jeff and I were talking. One of the ways we thought you could handle this is that your council, the emails that go to the council email address could be forwarded to you, to your individual emails. And that would be a reminder to you that you don't want to be replying all. Only council correspondence to council relating to an agenda item be put on on the agenda. And then if a council member wanted to discuss an email received, they could ask that it be put on the on the agenda. Those are just some some possibilities, but those are kind of the the pros and cons. I have to say, you got a lot of emails in 2020, but I have been here for a long time. And there have been years when there have been lots and lots and lots of emails. So I don't think it's actually that rare.
I like the idea, if it's not hard for staff to take those that come into the council email address. And obviously, if if staff looks at those and thinks there's a reply that is appropriate from them, that then gives us further information for them to do that first, but then to have all those sent to us. So if you get an email and it's like, okay, this is just some general comment on a particular topic. There's nothing really for staff to clarify or respond to. Then we just immediately forward it on to council. Oh, wait a minute, the second one, there there really is a question that we can give a clarification on. And that would give more context for council, then do that and then send it on to us. I like that idea so that, one, it keeps our packets a little bit smaller if we're getting this on a more regular basis between, rather than all of them at one lump sum. And from there, I don't have a problem with only putting the correspondence in the agenda packet that is related to items on the actual agenda. And I'll tell you, the last year or two, we've spent more time talking about the consent agenda than I've ever spent in councils in the previous nine or 10 years. And theoretically, a consent agenda should be something that a body simply motions seconds and votes on. It's it, you look at, I don't care if it's a board of directors for a bank or a nonprofit or whatever, just when you look at organizational structure, a consent agenda is something that that board should not be spending much time talking about. If they are items that need a lot of comment and discussion, they shouldn't be in the consent agenda in the first place. And so that's where I think as a council, we have really started getting into a lot of in-meeting discussion of items on a consent agenda that we don't necessarily need to.
As far as the public perception or expectation that you mentioned, Eleanor, I think, I want to make sure I understand the distinction. If an individual sends an email to our seven individual email addresses, that will never get into the packet, is that unless we forward it to Kelly saying, please include in the packet. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, because I think there's some, and and even, you know, when I was kind of reading up bef- before joining council, I think there's some, that's not very clear. And I think that's not clear necessarily to the public either, that if they send to council at IowaCity.org, it'll be included in the packet or be be on the agenda. I kind of like the idea of having, I I would want to communicate it first, but the idea of if a person wants that published, you know, to to have some way of indicating that. On the flip side, there have been emails that that, you know, I should have probably included in my head. It would be helpful to put in the packet, you know, that maybe all of us received, but we're not, you know, I don't think we're in the regular habit of just forwarding those to Kelly to get them into the packet. So there's just some inconsistency with residents who reach out to all of council. You know, they're either in the packet or they're not.
I it seems to me that we do a pretty good job, or council does a pretty good job, maybe I'm wrong, of forwarding tho- those emails that go to all of you, all of your individual addresses to us to put it to put in the packet. And there is an automatic response to the council email that says this will go in the next agenda packet. So so they should know, they should know that. And we could, we could certainly send that, change that automatic response depending on what you all decided to do. I have a little hesitancy about staff having to call, as as Susan, you were talking about, having to make decisions about which email right away, which emails we're going to forward immediately and which ones we're going to hold back and answer and then forward. That that may get a little complicated. I think I would suggest that we, if that's what you want to do, if you want to get them in real time, we simply forwarded them to your email addresses and then you will get the staff response as well if we choose to respond.
Well, I do like the idea of of getting correspondence in real time. I think that there's some benefit to that.
So it sounds like what we'll do is we'll bring this back on the work session agenda and allow the public some time to weigh in on this item and the other items. And we encourage people to let us hear your thoughts. Anything else on on any of the three items that were mentioned? All right. Clarification of agenda items, this for our formal meeting. Moving on to information packets, December 17. Moving on to December 23 information packet. And if I'm going too fast, just slow me down.
Oh, I'll make this real quick, Mayor, just IP2 on the December 23, the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition memo from Sarah Barons in looking ahead to 2021. I just, I really appreciated her memo and I want to thank thank her as well as the community partners who have helped secure rent and mortgage assistance and advocated at state and federal resources, ensuring that very critical needs for some of our most vulnerable members of our community that have been able to to make it through these trying times that we're still not seeing really the light at the end of the tunnel yet for that. So I appreciate her work and also all the community partners out there that that have worked really hard to to help those, as I'd said, very critical to those members of our community that needed that assistance and thank them.
Great.
I second that, Pauline.
Absolutely. All right. December 30 information packet. And I did want to just touch base on IP3 pendant work session topics. We had on our work session topics last year up until today, COVID. We just had it as a standard item. Wondering if, I know that Counselor Weiner had mentioned having Public Health come and speak to us. Since update us on COVID as it relates to our community or even having the University of Iowa, but also having some reports on the vaccination. So wondering, and Counselor Weiner, please chime in. But wondering if we would be open to having either the the University of Iowa or Johnson County Public Health come and speak to us on our formal agenda? Maybe once a month or and this is Counselor Weiner idea, so please feel free.
So so what I what I was interested in in having have happened just basically for the entire community or anybody who's listening is a regular report. Probably at this point by Johnson County Public Health to tell us where the vaccination rollout stands. And if there are any other sort of hotspots or other things we should be, we should be paying attention to. So that we're really, it could be the, it could be UIHC as well. But Johnson County Public Health, I think, is going to be integral in rolling out the vaccination plan for for our communities so that we're getting information directly from the people who are are making the policy and implementing the policy or from the scientists and now from those of us who are trying to to somehow to interpret what's going on or interpret what the scientists would like us to know. So I I and it just because there's been, there's been, from from my perspective anyway, at this point, a dearth of information out of this, out of state, I from Iowa Department of Public Health on on how the, what they're going to do in terms of vaccine rollout, aside from medical professional and professionals and and long-term care. They put together a commissioner working group that's not public. So it seems seems to me that it's really what they're doing in terms of deciding the priorities for vaccination, probably more important than almost anything we deal with under under public meetings law. But so the but the short version is, I thought it would be useful at least once a month for us to get just a, whether in the work session or in the formal meeting, a short report. Where do we stand with vaccination rollout? What are they recommending?
I I think it could be valuable if we're, if our intended audiences for the greater of Iowa City is for it to come during our formal meeting. Granted, there are people that chime in on our work session, but I think the majority of people actually wait till seven or 7:00 PM for our formal meeting. So I will be supportive of it and just wanted to get other counselor thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree, and I think the formal makes more sense because I do think we have a larger audience. I think it's key to keep it short, two to three minutes. But like you say, Janice, an update, you know, maybe where they're at in their plans and what they know. There's a huge educational component that has got to continue to go with us to hopefully encourage those people who are hesitant to educate them, have, you know, get them as much information and answer questions, you know, so that we can get as many people to participate as possible once they have the opportunity. So I think if we can just keep it a real brief update once a month, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Any, I'm I'm seeing some heads shaking. So we'll, City Manager Jeff, if you can reach out to Public Health, that'd be great. The other item that we have to discuss on December 30 is IP5, and this is a memo from our city manager.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Real briefly, this memo just updates you on a planning process that is just starting to unfold jointly with the county. They own property at 821 South Clinton, which is the corner of Clinton and Benton Street. That property is often referred to as the Carquest Building and and you may know it as the current home of the winter shelter. They are envisioning the future of that facility and is have graciously invited us into into that discussion. And I just thought I would check in with you to see if a council member, member or two would be interested in in joining staff for those discussions as we'll be working with your elected counterparts with the Board of Supervisors.
This is Pauline. I I was really happy to see this, actually, as an, I drive by that building so many times, all the time. And and I, in my head, think of all kinds of wonderful things that that space could be used for. So I I would very much, if you do put together some partners to meet with with the Board of Supervisors and others interested parties, I I would like to be one of those council members.
I also told Jeff during that meeting and I asked him to be part of it. And I really am passionate about this and I would love to be part of it.
Any other? One, general comments on this. I think, thanks for the memo personally, and I think it's a great opportunity to explore. And I'll leave my comments at that. And are there any other individuals that want to comment or that is interested in this, to be a part of the this group?
Well, I'd be interested. I don't know how many we want from council, so we'll just.
I I think Jeff mentioned two. So I guess we have, we have three that's interested. I I'm I'm personally comfortable with Counselor Taylor and Mayor Protem.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, any decision has got to come back to full council in in terms of city or personal position on anything, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. So it sounded like the two will be a part of those conversations. So thanks to both of you. Any other item from IP, from 1230? All right, council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees during the three weeks that we had off that was a little unusual at the end of the year. But appreciate it.
Nothing for me.
Okay.
The only thing I have is that the Jack has a new chair and vice chair. The new chair is from North Liberty and I'm the new vice chair.
Great. Good.
I I really want to say something. I did have a chance to say to everyone, Happy New Year to all our, you know, council members and also to the staff who are currently here and to the staff who always work behind the scene to make our city really comfortable for everyone. And I guess when I say Happy New Year, it was very tough year to go through at 2020, especially, never going to be forgotten. But you know, we we went through it safely. It is for me as a black person and as a black leader for the city, Mayor, I'm Mayor Bruton. We went through a lot, but I think we we've done a lot of work that need to be done. We've done some improvement, but there is a lot more to do. Looking forward to working with the staff and city council for 2021 to make it even better. Thank you.
Great. All right. Anything else? We will be back at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting. And remember to sign out of this Zoom meeting into our 7:00 PM Zoom meeting and we will see you all then. And remember to sign out of this Zoom meeting into our 7:00 PM Zoom meeting and we will see you all then.